We have reached the appointed hour. We have a quorum. This session will last from ten past eleven to twenty past twelve. That's on environment. May I welcome Secretary for Environment and his colleagues? The Secretary, would you please make a brief introduction? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to brief members on the funding for the Environment Bureau. I'll highlight the major points. We'll invest more resources on protecting the environment, improve air quality, water quality, and waste management, raise people's living standard. In this financial year, the Environment Bureau and its departments are given about one sixteen point four billion dollars, an increase of eight percent or one point two billion dollars. Among the sixteen point four billion dollars, recurrent expenditure accounted for seven point four billion dollars in comparison with twenty fourteen fifteen, a net increase of about zero point nine billion dollars. The increase in funding is to pay for waste management and sewage treatment there for the recurring expenditure, waste separation, and also the future arrangement for reception of C and D waste only by the S E N view. And we also will have funding for the green, community green centers, recycling of bottles. In twenty fifteen sixteen, the E P D will increase post by twenty six. In twenty fifteen sixteen, for non-recurring expenditure and also capital works expenditure is about nine billion dollars in comparison twenty fourteen fifteen, an increase of about three hundred and thirty million dollars or zero point, or four percent rather. The increase in funding for the increase of phasing out of your pre Euro four diesel vehicles and also for the organic waste treatment center. And let me now turn to the work of the Environment Bureau. We have, we have your speech. Because of time constraint, can you be brief?
We are trying to improve air quality, phase out all diesel commercial vehicles, support electric cars, reduction of emission by franchise buses for non-row machine emission and ocean-going, emission by ocean-going vessels. There will be stricter restrictions. We work with Guangdong to reduce regional emission. And as for enhancing water quality, Victoria Harbour Heads Two will commence operation. Water quality of Hong Kong will increase. We will step up our efforts in conducting the consultancy service on coastal water pollution and identify sources of pollution to formulate future measures. Yes, for the energy in dealing with climate, we will step up our efforts to reduce emission. And we will also deal with the scheme of control measures because they will expire in twenty eighteen. As for the fuel mix consultation, we will also publish the results. As a waste management, we'll continue to implement the blueprint, including the P R S. Starting from first of April, we'll introduce a comprehensive measure on cutting, on charging on plastic bags. As for infrastructure, first phase of the organic waste treatment center will be completed in twenty seventeen, and the, we'll start the feasibility study of second phase. As for nature conservation, we'll implement, formulate the first piece app. In the coming five years, we will enhance conservation and support sustainability. We'll enhance our efforts in protecting the environment to build a greener Hong Kong. But there's any, for those who want to ask questions, I've not pressed the button, but seventeen have already pressed the button. Have you pressed the button if you want to speak? I'll draw a line there. Four minutes each. But when time, your time is up, I will ask the member and also the official to stop speaking. You may give us written supplements if time is not adequate. Mr. Dr. Loa Kwok, thank you, Chairman. E N B zero three six, I ask a question on the energy labeling. The Director of V N M said that he would study the energy, that cover the, to consider extending the coverage of energy labeling. What do you think about the effectiveness of this scheme? How do you assess that? Another question is related, and that's about energy, is E N B one nine eight, is about the C F Ls and also the recovering of tubes, fluorescent tubes. Now, twenty eleven, twelve, an increase gradually to three hundred and fifty thousand, but in recent years, there was a decline in twenty thirteen, five hundred thousand, twenty fourteen, four hundred and seventy thousand. Now, since the C F Ls are being encouraged, the number of recovery of fluorescent lamps and tubes should increase. They are related to energy savings. Would you answer the question? Let me answer the second part. As for the first part, the Director will reply. This year, according to the policy address, we will step up our efforts in clean recycling, and that will cover various areas, including the area mentioned by member. We'll step up our efforts. May I thank Mr. Loa for the question concerning labeling, energy labeling? That is a regulation on domestic electrical appliances. In fact, it has already covered seventy percent of the energy consumption of domestic appliances. So I think the coverage is adequate. Of course, we are going to consider putting other electrical appliances into the regulatory regime. If you look at the effectiveness, starting from two thousand and eight, three types of electrical appliances were regulated, and we save one hundred and fifty million kilowatt hours. Together with the inclusion of the humidifiers and washing machines, we save two, twenty five million kilowatt hours. Now, with the standards, with the raising in standard, we will save about three hundred million kilowatt hours. So the labeling is very effective. Under E N B one nine eight, the question is about the banning or doing away with incandescent bulbs, but I've noticed the decline of recycling or recovery of fluorescent lamps and tubes. So you may not be successful in dealing with, doing away with incandescent light bulbs. With regard to the scheme for incandescent light bulbs, we have been implementing it for several years, from twenty ten. Mr. Tang Kap Yew, thank you, Chairman. Now, two questions are related to people's livelihood. At the start, Changquan O S E N T will only receive C and D waste. Starting from which month will the S E N T receive C and D waste only? As for vehicles visiting the S E N T, will the number decline? That's the first question. Answer the question first, maybe. The Secretary, will my colleague can supplement? As I said before, S E N T in Changquan O will only receive C and D waste. Domestic waste, the number of vessels visiting the S E N T will decline. At present, it's about a thousand a day, so the number will be halved. Yes, Chairman, if I may add, concerning the diversion scheme, if it goes smoothly by the end of this year, we can stop receiving domestic refuse from the, by the S E N T. When will you change the law? When will you go before this council to change the law? A piece of subsidiary legislation, in a piece of subsidiary legislation, we said that we will make, we can set a notice in the middle of the year, and we'll go before the Environment Bureau. Is it by negative thing? Yes, indeed. Do you mean before the summer recess or after the summer recess? Before the summer recess. I think that's good news for those who are concerned. Second quick point, E N B oh nine eight, concerning franchise buses by twenty nineteen, Euro two buses will be phased out, two thousand four and, two thousand four hundred and fifty six of them, more than, about half of the total number of the bus fleet. How can you prevent them from transferring their cost to the passengers? That's a major operation. It costs a lot of money. Yes, Mr. Lai, thank you for the question. According to the Transport Department and the franchise buses, the lifespan of buses should not be more than eighteen years. The franchise buses have their fleet replacement program. In the coming few years, there will be a peak of replacement. The bus companies have already taken that into account in the budget. How much will that involve? Are you sure that by depreciation and by resorting to the reserves, they can pay for that? That's a huge sum. Would that affect fares? Mr. Lai, do you know that? Has implication on fares? As far as we know, a double decker may cost three hundred, three million dollars. Now, you are helping them to retrofit catalytic converters. That cannot delay the replacement cycle. How many more years can a bus be used? As pointed out by Mr. Tang, two thousand Euro two, Euro three buses can be used by twenty, until twenty twenty six. Mr. Kenneth Lau, I have two questions. The first one, E N B one nine three, about the Steering Committee. Since it's formed in a green building Steering Committee, and since its formation in twenty thirteen, what has it done so far? Are you going to review the work of the Steering Committee? Do you have a plan, a review plan? Concerning the measures for relaxing G F As, will you review that? That's my first question. Yes, please answer the question. The Steering Committee for promotion of green building has two major tasks. First is to put the relevant government departments together to look into government buildings, to see how the government can promote green building and reduce emission. In two thousand and nine, the E N B and the Development Bureau signed a document requiring new government buildings and existing government buildings to meet the green building standards. Five or six years have elapsed. We are actively reviewing this internal document on how to enhance the government's role. As for the society, as for society as a whole, how can we promote saving energy that involves giving support to new buildings and make changes, and also help existing buildings to make changes? We have a blueprint.
This blueprint details the arrangements. And then concerning calculation of G F A and the concessions, comments are welcome when the consultation period begins. So when will the blueprint be available? Yes, Secretary? That will be launched during the summer holidays this year. And then my question relates to E N B one oh nine, Chairman. I understand that carbon audits have been carried out for certain buildings, and some data are available. I've got two questions. First of all, will you announce the results of these carbon audits for government buildings? And second, will you also carry out carbon audits on non-government or non-public buildings? I think I'll invite the Director to give a reply. Thank you. Concerning carbon audits, these are carried out in conjunction with the Environment Bureau. We look at the use of paper, and we also carry out auditing for energy efficiency. In fact, we have carried out carbon audits and energy audits for over one hundred and twenty government buildings. And we understand that there is room for improvement as far as energy efficiency is concerned. Mr. Lau can give members more details concerning carbon audits?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. With regard to carrying out carbon audits for private buildings, I want to say that last year, we launched the Carbon Footprint Database. And companies can through this platform, publish their achievements. And I understand that in fact, over sixty listed companies have already done this and will continue with our promotion work in the future. Mr. Wong Kwok Heng, I want to ask the Secretary this question. Two days later, the plastic shopping bag levy will be fully implemented. Many are of the view that there is still a lot of confusion and misunderstanding because of lack of inadequate publicity. Secretary, is that prosecution action will start in May, there will not be any enforcement taken in April? Now, there are one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine staff members in the E P D and forty-nine staff members in the Environment Bureau, and so who will be carrying out the undercover operations in May? How many officers will be carrying out the undercover operations? Will you be doing the undercover operations as well? And then, you know, when we buy lunchboxes, we are given plastic bags. So in future, will we be given plastic bags? You know, say for an ordinary lunchbox, if a plastic bag is not provided, then I can hold the lunchbox in my hand. But what if the, the box is a aluminium foil one? And so will I have to pay fifty cents for the bag? I can give you an answer, but I'll ask the Director to give a reply. Permanent Secretary, concerning the full implementation of the plastic shopping bag levy, there was a discussion in Legco. Can the Permanent Secretary please give concise replies to my questions? So the legislative framework has already been drawn up by the Legco. Now, for a lunchbox, if it is not a sealed one, then a plastic bag can be provided free of charge. Then second, how many people will be taking enforcement action? He wants to know how many people will be carrying out undercover operations in respect of the full implementation of the plastic shopping bag levy. Chairman, we have different officers responsible for enforcement action. There is an eighteen officer strong task force. And we will also be recruiting about fifty people to inspect the relevant premises. And they can make reports to our enforcement officers when necessary. We also have our enforcement staff in the various districts. They will take follow-up action on cases requiring attention. And then I come to my fourth question. You know, we have to pay fifty cents for a plastic shopping bag, but then banks aren't willing to accept ten cent, twenty cent, and fifty cent coins. So how, what can you do in order to try to promote the circulation of coins? Permanent Secretary? So the fifty cents has been in place for quite some time. So, but then what about paying one dollar for two plastic bags? And in fact, the minimum fee is fifty cents, but of course, you can pay a dollar for the plastic bag. Now, the legislation requires that a minimum of fifty cents be charged for each plastic In fact, it really depends on the operation of individual shop operators. But then, when retailers bring coins to the banks, they are charged for the coins. I don't think it's really your portfolio, Permanent Secretary. Mr. Tong Lee Chee, I want to follow up on E N B zero one eight. How we can encourage more people, more Hong Kong people to make use of our country parks? So concerning the campsites, we are told that there aren't any statistics concerning the utilization rate of the campsites or the number of visitors of the campsites. So how can we assess whether there are enough campsites provided in our country parks for public enjoyment? Yes, Director? Now, the campsites are located in the more remote locations. We have to look at whether approval conditions are met. And in fact, there are quite a large number of campsites available for public use, and we haven't got any feedback as to whether there are adequate campsites or not. Sometimes there are these camps erected on the campsites, and the camp owners may have gone hiking, and we can't really go in and this, and into the camps. So, but then we haven't really received views about a shortage of campsites. Two oh four, Chairman, Part C. It is said that policy bureaus and departments do carry out the energy audits for government buildings, and then suitable measures will be put in place accordingly. I want to know whether the measures are worked out by the Environment Bureau centrally or whether they are worked out by different bureaus. Mr. Lau? After the energy audit, a bureau or department will consider, oh no, no, I want to know who formulates the energy audit management proposals, the Environment Bureau or different bureaus? We do have some guidelines for the bureaus and departments, Chairman. In fact, such audits have been carried out by many departments, and there are exchange sessions for exchange of views concerning energy audits. And then different bureaus and departments carry out suitable measures accordingly. Mr. Tong Lee Chee, I want to now follow up on E N B one seven oh. It is said that since nineteen ninety-four, and as at the end of twenty fourteen, a number of vehicle owners have enjoyed exemptions. I want to know whether the administration has achieved its original target, or whether it has exceeded target, or whether it hasn't achieved the target.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. When we formulated the new policy, our intention was to encourage people to use electric vehicles. We didn't really set a target. We, of course, want to see more people purchasing electric vehicles, but I think there should be, or there should have been a target, Chairman. I've got another question, time's up. I want to remind Mr. Ma Feng Kwok and Mr. Ip Kwok Hing that this session has to end at twelve twenty. And in fact, I drew a line at Mrs. Tsing Chong Kai, and so I don't think you have time to ask questions. Mr. James Kian, oh two seven, oh two eight, Chairman, construction waste at the Changquan O landfill. We told that there are four million tons concerned of waste from large-scale infrastructure. And I want to know whether infrastructure includes public housing development. Chairman, four million tons come from fill materials from infrastructural projects, and these are public sector projects. And how many tons come from P R H and H U S development? I don't have the breakdown here. So please give us the breakdown after the meeting. Yes, thank you. Zero two eight, it is said that for fill materials which can't be accommodated in Changquan O, they will be sent to the mainland. So we need to receive four million, and it seems that the mainland can receive over ten million. Why is it that you can't send the four million tons of construction demolition field to the mainland as well, so that we can close the Changquan O landfill? We are talking about the landfill or the fill bank, and we have this amount of ten million every year. They are in Changquan O and in Tun Moon. And the two places can only receive twenty-two million. So every year when we have construction fill materials produced, we have to send some to Taishan. How many tons per year to Taishan? Every year, we have about ten million which can't be handled, and so about ten million tons are sent to the mainland every year. But can we have further discussions of the mainland, asking them to take in more tons? We are talking about the fill bank, Chairman, inert materials that can be used for reclamation. And so through certain contractual arrangements, they can be exported from Hong Kong. But then, for the ways that the Changquan O landfill, it shouldn't be exported, but that's also construction waste or construction field? No. Permanent Secretary? Yes, let me supplement. For C and D inert materials suitable for reclamation, they can go to this fill bank or they can go to Taishan. But then, some of the materials are contaminated, and they can't be used for reclamation, and so they have to be disposed of at the landfills. And in future, for the Changquan O landfill, it will only be used for construction and demolition waste. And then Wen Po Road, Chairman, according to the residents, there is a lot of wear and tear. So I would like to know how much money you've reserved for the maintenance of Wen Po Road every year? But then, is it for, is it that the E P D should answer this question? But then, the problems are caused by the trucks, the refuse collection vehicles. There is an interdepartmental working group responsible for maintenance of roads, and we are also a member, and so I'll relate this concern to the Highways Department. Now, for Wen Po Road, according to the residents, the C C T Vs are not switched on all the time.
Now, for Wenpo Road, according to the residents, the CCTVs are not switched on all the time in the evenings. So can you make available more resources so that the CCTVs are turned on round the clock so that you know which R C Vs are responsible for the pollution and then you can take prosecution action accordingly? For the dumping black spots, the CCTVs operate round the clock. But I understand that residents want CCTVs to be installed throughout along the road. We are studying this proposal. Mr. Frankie Yik, one seven eight Chairman. Pre Euro four diesel vehicles. You can see that as at the end of February this year, fifty-four percent have been replaced. And please look at the light buses. It seems that the outcome is not very satisfactory. This is because there are no choices in the market.
We have problems with Euro four and Euro five vehicles. They are facing difficulties. So what measures do you have to help them so that they can replace those vehicles?
Yes, Mr. Lau, I thank Mr. Yik for the question. Concerning the public light buses, they can use diesel vehicles and they can also make use of L G V vehicles, L G Vs. Because of the availability of gas stations, some P L Bs still cannot, some operators still cannot make use of L G Vs. We are making arrangement with suppliers to improve the situation. At the end of this year, Euro four vehicles will come to the end of their lifespan and they need to be replaced and I hope assistance can be given. Can you do something to encourage the operators to replace their light buses? Let me also move on to Y N B one seven seven. Now, you said that in two thousand five, the disposal of plastic tires have declined. In comparison with twenty fourteen, there will be an increase by several times. Now, your numbers are not real because concerning the waste tires, you have designated recyclers, they charge tire on a piece rate basis. Some therefore cannot pay and they just dump the tires somewhere. If they are not able to pay for the cost, can you do something like you deal with the bottles? Those, the plastic, the glass bottles? Say you do the recycling at the wholesale level.
Mr. Chen. Concerning P R S, we have several schemes, including plastic bags. We, waste electrical and electronic appliances equipment, we're going to launch P R S on glass beverage bottles in the blueprint. And we've also a series of items, including tires. Well, that's in the paper. Yes, we look into that.
Mr. Yik, you have to... Chairman, I'm not finished. Well, you just overlapped, I really can't hear you. I just hope that they can speed it up. They will study in twenty sixteen, eighteen, that's really too slow. If you support our increase in manpower, then we can speed up the process.
Mr. Yu Xiu Ying. Thank you Chairman. Y N B twenty four. My first question is concerning the country parks. The administration say that it's not able to get the numbers for the visitors. But in Y N B twenty five, you say that they accepted one point four million visitors. So shouldn't you do something on statistics on the number of park visitors, both local and non-local visitors? Now, you also have promotion. Would you answer, I'll let him answer the first question first, Mr. Wong.
I thank Mr. Yu for the question. We do have some rough estimates. The country park covers very, covers four hundred square miles. We do have surveys. We estimate that every year about twelve to fourteen million visitors. As for the Geo Park, it's smaller and the statistics is easier to do. As for the number of visitors to country parks, we will consider doing a more serious survey. Mr. Yu. Now, the country parks are very big. But you should have the statistics of major country parks. Say, for example, Lan Tao Country Park, you are going to develop it, so you need to have figures. Please consider that. And as for working with the Tourism Board or Tourism Commission, you say that expenditure is about fifteen million dollars. I don't think the money is for the Tourism Bureau or Tourism Commission. As for the promotion of ecotourism, how much will be devoted for that? Devoted to that, that is the department's expenditure. As for the Tourism Commission, we are working with it and we want to do more in terms of ecotourism. It's no easy task because of weather. During the summer, there are typhoons. During winter, it's very windy and cold and we still have to spend a lot of time to track overseas visitors. Can they provide us the numbers? With regarding, with regard to working with the Tourism Board, how much will be devoted to cooperation? We hope that the Tourism Board can provide the funding. They are not just doing geo tourism or ecotourism. These are just some of the items for attracting more visitors.
Chairman, I refer to the cooperation between the A F C D and the Tourism Bureau. How much money have you spent on this part, Mr. Yu? Y N B twenty three. Concerning the number of activities organized, more than ten thousand activities, participants, more than six hundred thousand. You need a lot of volunteers concerning promotion of nature conservation. How many dozens do you have? Concerning dozens, we have ecotourism companies which do provide guides, fund, transport. They have their own training courses for their guides. The number is difficult to know because they don't have any assessment mechanism. As for the Geo Park, we have an assessment mechanism. The guides or dozens. Chairman, time is, please provide the information in writing.
Mr. Wu Chi Wei, thank you Chairman. The question is about introductory remarks. You say you will expand the recycling network. But under Y N B one seven five, concerning the community green centers, the progress is very small. Concerning expanding your recycling network, you just referring to the community green stations or do you have other measures?
Mr. Chen. Concerning the C G S, it is only one of the networks. Starting from two thousand five, we have separation of waste at source through various community measures, including the three-color boxes. We have recycling, we have different types of recycling networks. We are expanding the recycling networks. We enhance support to be given to the recycling business. We've seen these networks from the three-color bins or tri-color bins to C G S. There is still a long way to go to a good recycling networks throughout the territory. Now, you have a network of cleansing contractors of the Housing Authority. Will you make use of these, this as part of your recycling network? Mr. Chen. In fact, I have talked to Mr. Wu on many occasions. And this, we're happy to look into that and we intend to talk to Mr. Wu again. But at present, there is no such plan. That's about cleansing contracts and we need to take that into account. Many private buildings have already dealt with refuse by this approach. They don't separate the arrangement. In fact, what the government is doing is just duplicating its efforts. Another is Y N B two hundred about oil prices. When we asked the question about the rapid rise and slow decline in oil prices or in petrol prices, we noticed that the F O B prices and the retail prices have a big gap. They are, they include profits and tariffs. If you look at your monitoring network, you can see that this gap is getting bigger. Has the administration looked into this seriously? In your monitoring process, will you monitor the gap as well? There should be no change in the gap. Mr. Lau. We are monitoring petrol prices and the change in international oil prices. Recently, we declined. My question is about changing cost. We see the decline in oil prices, but we have also seen decline in retail prices. But retail prices include tax. My question is tax and operating cost, they should be stable, they shouldn't vary too much. From July last until now, import prices declined. Mr. Kenneth Chen. I want to follow up on Y N B oh six two. That's about the plastic bag levy starting from the first of April. Mr. Wong Kwok Hing spoke loudly and asked how many people will be working on that. They only have ten in the team. Because of this scheme, they had more eighteen. Eighteen staff members who have to watch over one hundred thousand outlets. In the first phase, they put emphasis on promotion publicity. As for law enforcement, the eighteen people will have a hard time. There's a need to increase manpower so that they can enhance their measures in terms of promotion, education and enforcement. Now, there's a hotline. Three one five two 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 nine nine. Now, it is nine to nine A M to ten P M for seven days a week. Would you adjust the operating hours to this hotline? Would there be less manpower to manage the hotline? Now, when your scheme starts, consumers and shop operators may need the hotline service more. If you don't have enough manpower to do promotion and law enforcement, shouldn't you enhance your efforts in terms of the hotline? Second question is on language. We have many visitors. Say, in terms of at the border crossings and also tourist attractions, you will step up publicity. In terms of language, I believe you have Cantonese, English and Putonghua. But do you also take into account the language needs of the ethnic minorities? The P S Permanent Secretary. Concerning the hotline service, we'll continue to have the hotline. There will be no cancellation service starting from the first of April.
But do you know that in the past, the hotline operator from seven to ten P M, Monday to Sunday, is it that the operating hours of the hotline will be shortened, say to from eight thirty in the morning to six? And during the initial stage, will not shorten the operating hours? Now, because in a briefing to the industry, you gave a PowerPoint presentation and on one of the slides was said that the operating hours of the hotline would be shortened. So I hope that the hotline can operate for longer hours. And of course, at the same time, you'll be distributing pamphlets. And then Chairman, concerning publicity among visitors. Now, we've liaised to the Consumer Council. The Consumer Council will include some publicity materials on its website. So this is mainly for local consumers and we've provided publicity pamphlets to retail outlets where visitors frequent. And we hope that visitors will know why we need to have this levy. And what about ethnic minorities? How can you also cater for their needs? We may need to have to strengthen our efforts concerning ethnic minorities. Now, because people have many questions as to what and why and how and so I think it's important that you work out the details properly because the success or otherwise of the scheme depends on whether the details are right. Thank you. Ms. Emily Lau, zero four six Food Wise Campaign. Chairman, I understand that this is also for Hong Kong people's health and Dr. Ko is campaigning a campaign on using less salt and less sugar in food. But then it seems that only twelve government departments and bureaus have joined this campaign. And then, you know, are you asking people to eat less? If people eat less, then restaurants will make less profit. That may not always be the case, that's the chairman. But then I want to know whether you have restaurants signing up for the campaign? That's my question. Over four hundred organizations have joined, including hotels. And I understand that some of them have reduced their food waste by ten to twenty percent within six months' time. Now, because they can, through abiding by the charter, reduce food waste. We're not complacent with the present achievement. We want to have food-wise restaurants. So this is for the consumers, we want to give them an additional choice. So there will be reduced portions and people pay less because the portions are reduced portions. So we will work with hotels and restaurants and we hope that operating costs can be reduced, food waste can be reduced and there will be more choices for customers. So in other words, the restaurants will be making a larger profit. Because if restaurants end up earning less, then they will have little incentive to join. So how come you can have people eating less and yet restaurants making a larger profit? We can do it, how? Now, the calculation of profit is done by the restaurants themselves. We want to give an additional choice to the customers. We'll be working with the catering industry to work out this program. Chairman, they said that people will be paying less for the reduced portions. The answer is yes. Then restaurants will have little incentive to join the scheme because their revenue will drop. We've talked to some restaurants and hotels and some of them have already given positive responses. We hope that everybody will have an incentive to join, but you you are unable to 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 give us the details. Now, um restaurants will not um cut um the prices. But then you know that people will be eating less, drinking less. So how come people uh can pay less while eating less and drinking less and yet restaurants can make the same level of profit? Now, those in the catering sector know how to do the calculations. Uh, Miss Chen, Miss En Chen. My turn, Chairman, okay? Chairman. Concerning the Changkwan Old Landfill, one three seven. Uh, every day, over uh two thousand tons of waste are exported to Taishan. Why is it that we can't make use of the waste ourselves? If you go to um the Convention and Exhibition Centre, you'll see um reclamation going on. So how come we can't make use of the materials? How come we have to um um send the waste to Taishan um using vehicles and vessels? But do you know that in fact, Taishan welcomes the waste? Chairman, we're talking about large sums of money. So why is it that we are wasting such money and such resources? Yes, Secretary. Yes, I'll give a reply and then the C E D D can supplement. No, no, I I have a few more questions. Please give me a direct reply, I think he will. But he said he he just wanted to um give um a reply and other departments can supplement. But I've got two more questions. Chairman, um in the past years, for certain periods of time, we didn't have reclamation projects. And so the fuel bank was full. And so regional cooperation has helped us achieve a win-win situation. But in the future, when we have opportunities for reclamation locally, then we'll make use of the materials. Thank you, I I am happy to um hear what the Secretary has said, Chairman. And then um, yes, we are promoting the use of E Vs, electric vehicles, because they do not emit exhaust gas. But um because of um um the existence of more and um electric vehicles, um power generation has to be increased. And we um have coal-fired um generation units. In other countries, they use nuclear power. Secretary, in Hong Kong, we face this very big challenge. We are a city of high density and yet there and there is a very big problem of roadside emissions. And so encouraging the use of E Vs to reduce roadside emission is our top priority. Of course, there is no free lunch in this world. E Vs, uh the use of E Vs mean that um coal has to be burned to generate more power. But then we have to weigh the pros and cons. And we are now trying to optimize the fuel mix of our um power plants. And so the use of coal will be reduced. All right, I understand, I understand what you mean. Um, Secretary, what is important is that you have to be the gatekeeper. And I want to say that it's really very strange that um from the first of April onwards, um plastic bags will only be uh provided to customers sparingly. Uh, next, next, Mister Tam Yu Chong. Chairman, E N B one five four. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, um sludge treatment facility. The expected operating cost will be about three hundred million dollars. And then there will be about fifty-two vehicle trips to be taken each day for transportation of sludge by road to the sludge treatment facility. And one marine vessel trip is will be taken each day for transportation of sludge by sea to the S T F. Why is it that uh we're not making um more use of vessels to transport the sludge to the S T F? Is it because of cost concerns or considerations? Because the residents do not want you to use vehicles to transport the sludge to the S T F? Who can answer this question? Mister Chen. We are um already um making use of vessels as far as possible. But then the S T F uh in Sha Tin and North District are not served by marine transport. And so um vehicles have to be used. But then these are totally sealed um vehicles. So we really can't change the situation. Sludge can't be um transported to the facility by sea. But then I said that in future, um transportation to the landfills can only be uh by land and not by sea. Um, the situation is different, is slightly different concerning transportation of municipal solid waste. For um um municipal solid waste, we have more uh transfer stations and so we can make use of sea transport. But then for sludge, we have to look at the location of the S T F concerned. Um, because the residents um hope to see um the sludge and the waste transported by sea. Secretary, we're going to have a territory-wide study very soon on the transfer of waste. We hope to um try to reduce our uh reliance on land transport and make more use of um sea transport. We'll look at the environmental implications. When will the study commence and when will there be conclusions, Mister Chen? We'll start the uh study this year. It's going to take about eighteen months. Um, in other words, eighteen to twenty-four months. Miss Hau, thank you, Chairman.
I've um a question in relation to um the establishment. I want to know, I want to ask about the post of Director of Environmental Protection. Miss Wong, I'm not criticizing you. Um, I just want to ask whether uh a professional or an A O will be appointed to fill the post of um D E P? Um, in the past, one director rejected um at E I A report provided by the government and um and since then, uh we have had A Os um being the director. But then um um the director needs to have a technical expertise because he or she has to communicate with the uh with the sector. An A O who is not a professional in environmental um affairs can't command the confidence of the industry. So the director, uh what a director says is not convincing to the sector. So in future, when Miss Wong is transferred out of the post because Miss Wong has been in this post for five years already. So when you appoint um another director, in my view, you should appoint a professional. So what what is your consideration?
I don't know whether it falls within the ambit of our discussion today. That's why at the start, I uh say that it is in respect of uh personnel, personnel arrangement or personnel emolument. In terms of the same amount of salary, should you use the same amount of salary on a professional instead of an A O? Chairman, let me try to uh answer Miss Hau's question. In terms of the departmental structure, there are very clear-cut provisions. As for the E P D, um the merging of the bureau and the department was approved by this council. The D E P and the P S is a post jointly held by one official. The present arrangement is that the government uh deploy suitable persons uh to fill the post. As for the question raised by Miss Hau is about the change in structure, I believe is outside the ambit of this um agenda item. Well, they can uh easily uh dodge the question, but it cannot solve the problem. When the director signs the permit or when his conditions of permits are set, uh the decision may not convince the trade. And you need to talk to your own subordinate professionals. The merging of the bureau with the department is inappropriate. From this perspective, you say that's the political system issue, is not a budget issue, but is about personnel issue. If it is by an A O, you cannot be convincing in the trade and you will lead to greater expenses arising from that. Mister Xin Zhong Kai, my question in relation to paragraph nine about low sulfur content um fuel. According to the Secretary, there will be regulation on ocean-going vessels. Now, they are very polluting. They consume a large amount of fuels and there are international standards. As for um mobile machinery, um that is also a problem. Many vessels are coming from the P R D. Will those vessels be regulated as well? The um deputy, the undersecretary, for all vessels which berth at Hong Kong port, um they will um have to switch to low sulfur diesel vehicles, uh low sulfur diesel fuels. As the vessels coming to P R D, will they adopt the same policy? Um, we have talked to the mainland authorities for more than a year. And members may have noticed that in September last year, Shenzhen indicated that it uh wanted to encourage um the um vessels, operators, um to do the same. But that's a voluntary scheme and they have yet to legislate on that. Well, um it's good to have agreement on both sides of the border. And for ocean-going vessels, we need to comply with international agreements. As for non-ocean-going vessels and also vessels coming from P R D, say for example, the cross-border um vessels going to Zhuhai, Zhongshan or other places, should we also regulate those vessels and will there be legislation to deal with that? Then Secretary. At present, we only regulate ocean-going vessels. If we can agree with the mainland, they will regulate those vehicles. But when there is no agreement, Mister Li seems to uh want to ask the, answer the question. As for O G Bs, there is a new law. Starting from first of April last year with the agreement of this council, um sulfur content supplied locally will be, have been reduced by ninety percent, i.e. from zero point five percent to zero point zero five percent. If they fill up their tanks in Hong Kong, they will use low sulfur diesel oil. Low sulfur uh diesel. I think the regulation is similar with the mainland. Even if you don't legislate, those vessels coming to Hong Kong will have fuel less than zero point zero five percent. In Hong Kong, if they fill up in Hong Kong, they are regulated, they have already done that. But what about those uh vessels filled up in the mainland? Is their fuel a good quality fuel? Mister Li. If they fill up their oil tanks in Hong Kong, starting from first of April last year, they are all L S Ts. If L S D, if it is um in the mainland, according to the requirement of a country, it's also L S D. Do you have inspections? The law? Mister James Chan, Mister Mike Koutian.
Chairman, I'm hundred percent for reducing waste. Um, that's in relation to E N B one six oh. In Japan, in Korea, they are reducing the number of litter bins in the streets. The administration said that in Hong Kong, there are twenty-one thousand such litter bins. In twenty sixteen, there will be a pilot scheme to reduce um the litter bins in certain areas. And then afterwards, you assess, assess the hygienic situation, will there be increase in littering? People if just keep consuming, they they will just throw the refuse in the streets. Well, I don't know whether you buy snacks in the streets. In most of um that the most of the litter bins collect um refuse arising from immediate consumption in the streets. Usually, they are paper cups, um plastic bags, boxes. Well, I did, I did create quite an amount of such refuse. Whether you um take away the litter bins, then people just don't take snacks in the streets. That will affect the catering industry. It seems that the bureaus are just guarding their own turf. They consider their own policy, but have you considered the impact on the economy? Will you work with the um C E D B and look at the matter not only from the hygiene perspective, but also from the economic perspective? Small caterers may have a strong reaction. So will you conduct a review also from the economic perspective? And if there are economic losses, will you call it to a halt? Or what will you do? In fact, there is a interdepartmental department to deal with that. There are specific issues in terms of municipal waste charging. Where do we put the litter bins and whether we should change the sign of the litter bins? As for municipal solid waste charging, we don't want the litter bins uh will undermine the implementation of the charging scheme. As for litter bins, they do serve certain functions. Chairman, she is not addressing my question. We are conducting the relevant study. We will not take away all the litter bins. Do you just look at hygiene? Do you look at the economic implications as well? Yes or no? We will take into account local needs. Will you work with the C E D B in the review? We'll invite the C E D B. We invite the C E D B or local people to give their views. Apart from us looking at it, we also have district liaison arrangements. We have different liaison groups. Thank you for your positive reply. Don't just look at um, your own turf only, and that's a problem.
I have a quick point. My question is E N B O eight six. It's about the um, uh, items twenty thirteen, fourteen, one twenty-five projects, twenty fourteen, fifteen, forty-four projects. What are the reasons for the approval project, decline approval projects by the Environment Conservation Fund? Mr. Chen. Hi, hi, you want my Yes. In the past, there was a scheme to support the business sector in respect of recycling uh, projects. In twenty fourteen, fifteen, the emphasis of the scheme is placed on overall recycling. We put more resources to recycling in public housing estates. There's a change in emphasis. We work with housing estates. And therefore, uh, there was less for commercial um, aspect. Did you do less? No, we we didn't do less. Every year, we have a plan and with different emphasis. And then we'll make invitations according to our emphasis. And when there are different needs, we change the emphasis. As for glass bottles, you can organize the recycling. The problem is how do you make use of the bottles collected? Do you have a target? How many bottles can you make use of or can you recycle? Um, in promoting the recycling of glass bottles, you can get representatives from the trade to help you. Do you have any targets for the recycling of glass bottles? We are now drawing up a P R S for glass bottles. We are working with the works departments to make an assessment. Concerning the um, glass bottles collected in Hong Kong, they can be recycled locally. Uh, we've already um, solved the problem on use. We are now making arrangements to set up the mechanism. We will balance the logistic expenses. Now you ask the producers, say for example, to pay you, say for example, the wine producers to pay you. Now, concerning you collect, the glass bottles you've collected, they only, the amount you've collected is a small part. We can give you a lot more glass bottles. We can have a certain um, estimate on the amount of glass bottles. And there is a mechanism uh, to um, recycle the glass bottles locally through various public works projects. So you can, you can really make full use of the glass bottles collected? Yes, indeed. The glass bottles thrown into landfill can be recovered, right? No, um, we can recycle the clean glass bottles. So you can fully consume all your, the the glass bottles we give you? Yes, indeed. Now this is the um, P R S for glass bottles for beverage. All right, we adjourn our meeting and we begin at two again.